Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the June 22 board meeting to order and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nurdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
President. All right, public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any board member would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Moved by trustee Graffia.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Saturn. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nurdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
And supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Okay, you have minutes from the June 24 public hearing for the amended road district budget and the June 24 board meeting. Any questions or suggested changes to either of those sets of minutes? Can I have a motion to approve those two sets of minutes as presented?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Saturn. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Nurdowski. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed.
Please note, I'm just abstaining because I wasn't here for the meeting.
Okay, no opposition, one abstention from trustee Graffia. Thank you. Okay, we have presentations, so we have deputy assessors votes.
Would you like to say a word to...
I'm pleased to present before you both of my employees, my newer employees, Annette White and Brian White, who in their relatively short tenures have secured certification as Certified Illinois Assessing Officers. Now our full-time staff is fully certified, fully professional, and I'm so very proud of both of them, as I am my chief deputy, but I'd like to call them up now to be sworn in as deputy assessors.
You can call them up here, or do it one at a time?
Yeah. Why don't we... Annette, you have seniority.
And you start with a.
Okay, Annette, if you raise your right hand, follow what I say. Aye.
Aye.
Say and state your name.
Annette White.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge all the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge all the duties.
Of the office of deputy township assessor to the best of my abilities.
Of the office of deputy township assessor to all my abilities.
Best of your abilities.
Best of my abilities.
Very well, congratulations. All right, Brian? I was gonna say the whole thing and then to have to remember. Okay, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye, Brian White.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
All the duties of the office of the deputy township assessor.
All the duties of the deputy township assessor.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Okay. Reports, assessors report, Connie?
Of course, you've had my written report. Since that has happened, we did send out emails to alert our taxpayers that are on the senior freeze of the potential of errors in their tax bills, in that the county has made errors in the base year. And even though we had only seen a handful at one time, we felt a moral and ethical obligation to put them on alert so that they could look at their tax bills, and if they had any questions, if there was a possibility of an error, that they could come in and we could address it for them. So that has obviously generated additional activity in the office. Also, we completed today an agreement with Commissioner Morrison and the Recorder of Deeds that we will be having an outreach program at the Elk Grove Village Council Chamber October 1st to inform citizens on protecting their title from fraud, which is a free program, and also on property after death, which is a very inexpensive program. For example, if you do not have a will, that you can transfer your house for $50, and it is registered with the Recorder of Deed, and it does not need to go into probate. So we felt that this was a particularly important program for our taxpayers, and particularly seniors who think about, you know, final distribution of their assets. This goes for automobiles, et cetera. So that will be taking place in conjunction with Commissioner Morrison and the Cook County Recorder of Deeds, October 1st of this year. Are there any questions so far about my report and what I've just said? All right, hearing none, you know, I know Mike was concerned and wanted you to be kept fully informed about a situation that happened about a week and a half ago. And I know that Mike is very emphatic about transparency, and so from that standpoint, I felt that if you had questions about that, I would be more than happy to answer those questions on how that came about. In fact, I have a packet, if Laurie would like to... I'll let you read those at your leisure. Because I'm sure that there's no action that needs to be taken, but I did want to at least cover it in an abbreviated form. It was last Wednesday, July 10th, that Chief Deputy Wagner got an urgent phone call from the chief deputy in Wheeling, Julia Lipka. She had been called out of town because her father was in critical condition and she had to fly to South Dakota. Knowing that they had literally been put in the worst possible situation, the perfect storm for an assessor's office, they had 5,000 senior freezes incorrect. At the same time, now this is tax bill, right? You've got 5,000 senior freezes incorrect. At the same time, they are open for the triennial reassessment, plus the normal number of people who come in for second installment tax bills, looking to see whether or not their exemptions have... So they hit absolutely the perfect storm, and Julia was beside herself because of the personal situation that occurred and asked for our help. It was absolutely apparent that as colleagues and professionals and neighbors, that we provide that help. So Annette went and spent one day at Wheeling assisting them. Brian has spent one day assisting them. Now, obviously, when Mr. Peacock found out that this was going on, he was concerned for a various number of reasons. However, I had an agreement with the Wheeling Township Assessor, Jerry Sadler, who I've always found to be a very honorable man, saying that he would make us whole for whatever cost would be incurred. However, it just seemed to get more and more complicated as the township attorney weighed in on the subject, and from that standpoint, even when he went through all of his, and this could happen and this could happen, at the very bottom, he said, "Well, yeah, I can see where you would lend somebody," particularly in an emergency situation. So needless to say, this for us was upsetting. One would almost think that this would be covered under the Good Samaritan law that, and we know very full well, that if we had run into the same situation, we could have expected the same response from Wheeling, or Maine, or Hanover, or Schaumburg. These were an unusual, you know, set of circumstances that nobody could possibly have foreseen. Anyway, to summarize, let me put it this way. After the attacks on September 11th, or the landfall of Hurricane Katrina, first responders from around the country went to New York City and New Orleans to provide assistance to cities that were overwhelmed by disaster. This type of assistance among local government is not limited to these well-known disasters. In times of crisis, first responders often use their skills to help people regardless of whether those receiving assistance live in their jurisdiction. This month, our neighbors in Wheeling Township Assessor's Office are contending with a tax disaster of epic proportion. The employees of Elk Grove Township Assessor's Office are among the few in the area with the skills to help in the wake of this crisis. I have authorized some of my employees to go to Wheeling to provide assistance. If you've read the Daily Herald or seen Channel 2 News recently, you may be aware of about 500 low to moderate income seniors of Wheeling Township have received tax bills that were much higher than they should have been. The higher tax bills are a result of a computer error by the Cook County Assessor's Office that miscalculated the value of the senior tax freeze exemption. The massive failure to calculate the freeze correctly has resulted in a huge number of panicked senior citizens visiting the Wheeling Township Assessor's Office seeking help. As serious as the disaster impacting seniors is, the freeze miscalculation is not only the only issue facing Wheeling Township Assessors at this time. The month after the mailing of the second installment is one of the busiest times of the year for a Township Assessor's Office, even without the problems associated with the senior freeze. In addition, Wheeling Township is going through their triennial reassessment at this time, which has further increased the demands on the Wheeling Office. As a result of all of these events happening simultaneously, the Wheeling Office has been overwhelmed and has been actively looking for assistance to contend with an unprecedented number of taxpayers seeking its services. Using the authorization granted to me under state law, I decided that my office would provide the assistance we could to help our neighbors in their time of need. The Township Code makes it clear that the employees of the Township Assessor are subject to the direction of the assessor and not the supervisor or the board. The example being, the Township Board may employ and fix compensation of township employees that the board deems necessary, excluding the employees of the office of the supervisor of general assistance, town collector, and township assessor, and you'll see the codification on there. The authority of the assessor is reiterated in another section of state law. The board shall have no power to approve or disapprove personnel of the Township Assessor, and again, the citation. While denying Township Board and supervisor authority over the employees of the assessor's office, state law also requires the board to fund the Township Assessor's Office by paying for the expenses and personnel of the Township Assessor's Office, again, the citation. These obligations were made clear by the Illinois Appellate Court in 2002, when it issued a ruling regarding a claim that a woman working for a township was the employee of the township and thus subject to its rules. The court ruled against the woman, even though the township was paying her salary. Quote, "That the township continued to pay plaintiff her salary pursuant to its statutory obligation to provide the funding for the assessor's office does not transform plaintiff into a township employee." Plaintiff never became an employee of the township under that theory, and that's Harris versus Eckersall, and you also have the citation. It should be clear that I am authorized under state law to direct the employees of my office, and that neither the Township Board nor the supervisor have the authority to withhold pay from my employees because they might make a different choice as to how I use my employees. Although I have the power to decide how best to use my employees, I am mindful that my primary obligation is to the residents of Elk Grove Township. Because of this, I have rarely asked my employees to go to another jurisdiction to provide help. The situation in Wheeling, however, is both unprecedented and unique. In much the same way that the first responders who went to New York were not directly helping their own residents in the aftermath of September 11th, the work my employees are doing in Wheeling Township does not directly help the residents of Elk Grove Township, but I believe our work is indirectly benefiting Elk Grove residents. If Elk Grove Township should ever go through a similar disaster to the one befalling Wheeling, our willingness to help a neighbor makes it more likely that a neighbor will be willing to help us. In addition, some in state government are talking about eliminating township government. This would be detrimental to the people whose use the services, that use the services of my office, and has led me to believe that it is important to show, excuse me, that township government is responsive, it's effective, it is an effective form of government. In my judgment, helping Wheeling Township in its time of need is the way to show the overall value of township government, and this is a benefit to my constituents in Elk Grove Township. Finally, at a time of crisis, one does not wait to provide assistance until an intergovernmental agreement is signed. However, Wheeling Township has indicated it is willing to reimburse Elk Grove Township for the time my employees spend in Wheeling under terms that will be worked out. They have been worked out, an invoice has been sent, so that it is, there is no cost to Elk Grove Township. In the light of the fact that I have been the Elk Grove Township Assessor for 29 years, it is clear that the voters of Elk Grove Township are comfortable with the way I exercise the authority granted to me under state law. Although I am happy to address any questions the board has regarding the way I use my authority, I expect that the Township Board and Township Supervisor to comply with their obligations under state law. Any questions?
I'll just state that you went through a lot of information there that none of the board members were privy to prior to this meeting, so I think it's a little unfair that we asked to respond to all the information you put out there. I did ask if you were gonna bring up this topic at this meeting, that you provide the board with information.
Well, they have it now, and I understand an email went out regarding the situation to the board.
Understand, no, understand. And all I'm saying is, so asking us to respond is a little difficult, but I will say, just for myself personally, the issue is never loaning employees out, and, you know, having some kind of agreement, my issue, I think I made clear, if I haven't been clear, I'll do that now, it's the exposure that's created for the township, the corporate entity, by loaning employees out, and it's not just easy to say, "I'll go help." We do wanna help, I don't have a problem with that, it's just even have an agreement, an informal agreement, to have the attorney look it over quickly, to say, "This is what we agreed to? Who's gonna take liability for workman's comp issue, any of those things?" Just to have it all worked out so it's clear. That's the only thing that I wanted. When it comes to how you direct your employees, you're absolutely right. How you direct your employees is one thing, in the confines of their work for Elk Grove Township. When they go to work for another entity, it creates possible exposure for the township. That's all I wanted to address. I thought that was very reasonable, and you're right, in times of a crisis, having time to do an IGA, very difficult, but even an informal agreement down on paper that the board, that the attorney could review, just to ensure that we have, you know, we're addressing all the potential exposure, that was my only concern. It had nothing to do with talking about township entities.
And I realize that. However, in Mr. Tremblay's response, which you have, you know, he was talking about workman's comp, he was talking about possible harassment that my employees might undergo at Wheeling Township, which I found almost ironic from the standpoint that we felt that this was sort of a harassment situation, but from that standpoint, that really applies to any time they leave this building, whether they're going to Skokie to drop materials off at the Cook County Satellite, whether they're going to continuing education, or whether we're going to meetings with the Cook County. So if we were looking at it in such a limited parameter, it would almost seem like no one could leave the building, and I certainly would not want that because that would certainly affect the way we do business.
No, it's, I'm sorry, no, if they're doing work for Elk Grove Township and they leave the building, there's a difference between going to do work for Wheeling Township and leaving the building. It's pretty clear. If they're dropping something off at Skokie, they're doing work for Elk Grove Township, they're doing a seminar somewhere for Elk Grove Township residents, they're working on behalf of Elk Grove Township. I don't think, I know I wasn't out of bounds, just wanting to have that clarification. I understand in township government and area, like other township officials, we get along, we wanna have collegial relationships, and that's fine. You know, we don't have, we don't have, you know, automobile insurance or homeowner, you know, homeowners insurance, because, you know, in the case of something happening, right? You don't know when it's gonna happen, you hope it doesn't happen, but Jason was laying out, the township attorney was laying out possible things we needed to be made aware of.
And at the end of it, he said he saw no problem with lending an...
Neither do I, as, neither, and I've said that, neither do I. It's making sure that we have, like I said, and it's not, I know it's provocative to mention the sexual harassment, right, but in reality, he's talking about workman comp issues, all those things, he like, because he did not, he was not provided with the details of your agreement, which we requested, he was just generalizing. These are the things, these are the multiple things you kinda just need to be made aware of, and I thought that was reasonable to just say, "Hey, take the time, we're sending our folks out, can we just get a review of what we're doing so we have all the boxes checked, so we know if someone gets hurt on the way or at Wheeling Township, who's covering it?" I think that's reasonable, and that's, that's all I wanted, I hope.
Well, I think the thing I didn't find reasonable was the intimidation of the threat of salary stopping for my staff.
It wasn't, it wasn't a threat, I...
That is an illegal act.
As a fiduciary, I told, I waited, I said, "We, well, we didn't withhold any pay," by the way.
No, you didn't, but you threatened it.
I did not threaten, I...
On the email.
The threat was, I needed to make sure that I was allowed to pay, I was withholding, I was going to withhold pay, because as a fiduciary of Elk Grove Township, I needed to check with counsel to determine if I could pay with Elk Grove Township tax dollars.
That is why the statutes are noted in my presentation. That is my purview to do, not yours.
No, I, that's fine, and I understand the urban myths about you can't say anything about assessors offices, you can't do anything, I mean, at the end of the day, we're the governing body that oversees things.
And I'm the management.
And that's fine, but what I'm saying is, I did not know if I was legally authorized to pay somebody out of Elk Grove Township funds for work they were doing for another entity. That's why I was withholding until I got some clarification from the township attorney, and we weighed the pros and cons, and I decided that we do the invoicing route. Once I had clarification on what my fiduciary responsibility was.
Well, that's why I put the citations in there, as long as I had funds in my line item, they were mine to dispense.
You can't just, okay, and that's fine, if you feel that you can just do anything you want, that's fine, we can agree to disagree. In this case, I think I was being very reasonable and just wanted to make sure the township as a whole did not have additional exposure that we needed to be made aware of, that's all.
And they didn't.
Well, fortunately, not, but they could have, we could have, so, thank you. Any questions for Connie? Thank you. Clerk's report, George?
The clerk's report is providing a written form, there's a couple FOIA requests, information about some filings and some other odds and ends, so I think you can read that, and you can, if anybody has any questions, you can ask them here. We get FOIAs on a regular basis for various purposes. Some are specifically about projects such as our consolidation and moving into the new facilities, and they're checking on, you know, what the contracts we're signing are. Others are, involve other properties in the township, others are just in general finding out what we're paying, and who's our employees. So a broad cross-section of information. We're very transparent on this. The only, only thing is, is a lot of times, we're requesting for information that we don't have. We have to refer them to other government bodies, because a lot of times, people assume that we have more information or more, or more directly involved in some of the issues in the, in the unincorporated or in our just township areas than we are. So, but it's interesting to sort of track what these FOIA requests are, it gives you an idea what people are thinking about, what people are asking questions about, and then the other information is just, is just FOIA information.
Any questions for George? Okay, Highway Commissioners Report, Hart?
I'd just like to say that we're hopefully seeing the end of the tunnel in our road paving project. Tomorrow morning, we're gonna have a walk-through with engineer Mark Tholl, the contractor builders, and all their subcontractors to go over items that need to be done, that haven't been done, and things need to be fixed, so.
Any questions for Hart? Okay, all right. Can I have a motion to approve the elected official reports as presented? So moved by trustee Graffia, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Saturn. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. No correspondence. Under old business recertification of elected officials regarding participation in IMRF, a lot of things going on, I haven't gotten a definitive answer on this yet, so if I could have a motion to table this item till next month, I'd appreciate it.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Saturn, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Nurdowski. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Okay, you have four proposals for a loan on the Landmeyer Building to help cover any contingencies based on the value of the property. We were able to go up to $400,000. So you provided this information, this is not of any, if you wanted some additional time to review it, right now, it looks to me as if Parkway Bank was clearly ahead, not only on the terms of the loan, but the interest rates seem to, they, they're the most competitive, but if the board would like some additional time, this, we have time to consider a loan. We don't need the money right now. If we do need it, it wouldn't be till towards the end of the project anyway, so I'm willing to open it up. Any thoughts, questions from the board about what we'd like to do?
You said there was four options, right?
Yeah, Cornerstone, Parkway, Signature, and Wintrust. Signature Bank was outside the realm of being competitive. Cornerstone was a little bit higher on the interest, you see, Parkway was at 3.2, I believe, on the tax exempt rate. Wintrust was approaching that competitive rate, offering, the nice thing about Wintrust, even though it's a slightly higher rate, they offer a draw, as opposed to an outright loan.
So would that mean that you would only be charged interest on what you were drawing?
That's correct.
Kinda like a home equity loan?
Like a HELOC, yep, mm-hmm. I mean, if you wanted to take, like I said, we don't have to decide this tonight, I just wanted to, if you had any questions.
It would seem to make more sense to postpone it until we actually need the money.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I mean, I...
Yeah, I mean, there's no point in, in taking out the loan until you need it. I mean, we can set that up and close. I mean, if we did it next month, I mean, probably, they're looking at finish, between mid-October and the end of October, finishing the project. So if we, we'd have plenty of time, if we approved it in August, to close in September and have the money available. All right. If that's the case, if there's somebody that'd like to make a motion to table 600 Landmire remodel project, the loan for contingencies?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Keenly. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Nuredowski. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. This last piece of old business resurrected recently. So, George, you put this together, if you want to discuss the procedures for agency grants.
Yeah, the board asked that we put together a proposal, or policy, I'm sorry, for agency grants in terms of request, and, and in terms of invoicing and, and payment. If you've had a chance to read this, I think it pretty well means what the board gave me the consensus that they were looking to do. And there is one issue that our administrator is, is, and supervisor is uncomfortable with, and that's, that they felt that, that, that the agency should not necessarily be notified at the end of the year if they have not fully requested all the funds that they were entitled to. They felt it was their responsibility to do that. And if they didn't, you know, that was their, it was, it was, they just had to deal with that. So, this can be approved in whole, or it can be, parts of it can be changed or modified and dropped. But though, that was the one area of, of concern or that I had gotten from the supervisor and the administrator.
So when they get the grant, they don't say, like invoice, "I would like my payments monthly, quarterly, or semi-"
They, they, they set it up with the-
Semi-annual.
With the, they set it up with the administrator in terms of how you want it, they want it paid, right?
Well, it's $5,000, $5,000, you get it in two payments. Anything above $5,000, you'll get it in monthly.
Okay. So how would they not ask for all their money then?
They don't, they have to send an invoice in.
Oh, okay.
So we, yeah, so we don't, yeah, we don't just send the money out, yeah.
If they're semi-annual or monthly, they have to send it in.
We divide up their money and then, yeah, and then they have to ask for it.
And we've run into situation twice now where agencies have failed to request the full amount.
Interesting.
They've forgotten about sending invoices in. And we have, in both those cases, have waived the-
The boards voted to do that.
The boards voted to continue to, to still pay it. But we had, the board had said that they would like to have a procedure or policy that could be shown to, that could be given to the agencies so that they, that they know this is specifically how we're doing it, and we don't want to deal with exceptions all the time.
And the deadlines for providing invoices are in the, in the applicant, in the, in the application, or the agreement, I should say. So they know when our budget year ends. That's not the only thing. I, I, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm less concerned about the language in the third paragraph of the township administrator should notify each requesting agency of the receipt of their application. I, I don't know if we should even go that far. I mean, if they want to follow up with us, I mean, that we received it, that's fine, but, you know, it kind of goes back to their responsibility. I'm not as strict on that. I think the, the fact that we're going to follow them up at the end of the year to say, "Bill us, please," is going a little too far. I don't see the need for this agreement at all. I think it's laid out in the, the agency grant agreement anyway. All this stuff is laid out, and we follow a process. You know, we get the information out there, we give them a clear timeline of when app, when applications have to be submitted, what's required. They have ample time to do that, so.
One of the reasons that, that this came about, at least from my particular perspective, was last year when we had that very late submission.
Mm-hmm.
And the board actually approved that. And this doesn't address that in any way, shape, or form.
Well, the idea, the idea was to put in a procedure to stop that from happening, and the procedure, the idea was that, well, they haven't asked for their money, so let's call them and tell them that there's money here that they need the invoices for. That was the solution. I mean, that's, that was the one addressing that.
That doesn't, that doesn't answer the problem where the, the, the agency that was requesting the funds did it several months after the deadline was over.
The board just has to follow, the, the board has to uphold the agreement.
Yeah.
If the board wants to override that, they can. The board can uphold their agreement.
There was no, there was no policy before, is what the feedback was, there was no policy, so that you guys just took them as they came.
Well, it's in the agreement, right? I mean, it's in, it's in the agreement we have with each of these agencies of when they're, when they're required to have invoices sent. So that's, that's it. Do you want to uphold that agreement or not? But I mean, like I said, I think this is, you know, this is very, I, I just think it's very redundant. I mean, I, I appreciate the work that went into it, and it's, I think some of this stuff is good, right? Making sure that they have, they're notified three months ahead of time. We can do that internally without a policy. I mean, to give them plenty of time to, I, I know they have to get a variety of staff members together to put all the information together, and that's important, right? To give, we don't want to tell them, "You got a week or two weeks to send it in." So we can do that, and, and we can back that out and make sure that applications go out ahead of time to give them plenty of time. We've never had an issue where they haven't had at least two months, I don't think, to, to complete it. What's that?
Usually we go out and-
Yeah, so I mean, that, and we're not approving, we've been approving the budget this past year, it was even early, late February, but I mean, in March, the last, I don't know how many years. So, it gives them the time. I mean, I don't necessarily have a problem with that, that procedure, but following them up on the back end just doesn't really seem like that's our responsibility.
Yes, my feeling was when the board asked that a policy be put together was because in one case, somebody did not submit their application in time, and in two other cases, they did not invoice in time. And in both those cases, the boards went back and forth, discussion of whether we should pay or shouldn't pay, and there was a request to put that in, or a desire to put that in writing so there, so that we wouldn't, that the board wouldn't go through that. Now, they still can. There's no, I agree with the supervisor, there's no need for this, other than it provides structure to the board, for the board.
I have a question. In the last couple of years, I think there's been times where agencies have come to ask for a one-time grant during the year.
During the year?
Yes, and we've-
I mean, they've asked, there's, there's people that have asked, that we tell them to come back in the following year. There's people that have come and asked, they haven't been, they don't come back every year. Is that what you mean?
No, well, I think there's a few times, and Paul mentioned he had gotten some requests, and then you asked us, and we, I think we gave you approval that if you wanted to do that, you could.
But it wasn't a late sub, it was a late-
It wasn't really like one of these grants.
It was a late submission, though, wasn't it?
I think it was just a request for a, for a-
Donation, yeah.
For a specific function, issue, or event or function that we, that was, that was separate from the grant process.
I'd have to go, I mean, I, it's not, I mean-
So we're, we could, you could still do that. I'm just saying.
There were two issues, I think. One was that one agency didn't submit, didn't follow up to say, "Did you get my information?" So they got skipped. I thought it was, they weren't sending in anything that year. So they got skipped, and they came back-
Right.
-three months into the year. The other one was, there was somebody that came during the year and said, "I'd like to make a request." I, I get those all the time. "I'd like to make a request." I said, you know, "We're six months, eight months into the year. The board normally does this at budget time. You'll need to resubmit next year." And several of them have come back the following year and done that.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, kind of.
I'd have to go back and look at the minutes to see if we've received a mid-year one or just a one-off request for-
I think, I think we've had a one-off request that the board approved.
That could, that could be, I just, I just don't remember. We would have to just go back and, that could be, I just don't know. Okay. I'll open it up to the board for discussion.
I think it doesn't hurt, it'd be helpful just to have this, like you said, you know, here it is, and next time this comes up, we have a policy to follow, even though I know it is included in all the grant info.
And, and I don't necessarily have a problem with that. I just, I, I just, that last sent, that last, those last two sentences, I just, I really, I, I do have a strong, very strongly opposed to following them up to give them money. If they don't have procedures, we're going to pass a procedure so that if they don't have a procedure in place, we're creating a procedure to remind them.
Yeah, I would agree with you on that. That was a ton of responsibility. I don't know why they wouldn't send the grant in without return receipt requested, or if they dropped it off by hand. Would you please sign this that you received? It's something in writing that it's been received.
Oh, we're talking about two different, we're talking about two different things.
No, 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 I, I, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, okay.
All I'm saying is, I don't know why they wouldn't, in the first place, make sure that we got it in some way, shape, or form, like a return receipt requested.
Right.
So I don't know why we would be calling it up to say, "Hey, you've got money here." That's their, that's their-
I think it happened because it happened to our ma, I think the reason why it was, it was as highlighted as it was, it was our major, it was our largest organization that we support, Kenneth Young, which is very dependent upon our support in a lot of ways. And they had a turnover, and they screwed up. They didn't invoice it. And it was a major hit to their, their budget for mental health, which is our major partner for our IGA. So, the, the point is here is that that could happen again. Who knows, you know?
You're absolutely right. It could happen. But again, I don't know if it's necessary for us to call up all of the agencies that might have money left over and not have them.
No, I, no, I, I, I don't disagree with you in regard, but we went through this last time, and we, if you want to, for lack of a better word, capitulated.
We did?
So, I mean, so what-
Well, we, we still, we still have the ability to capitulate.
Yeah.
Yes, this doesn't stop it.
Okay? We don't have to, we don't have to add an extra, an extra layer of something to do.
No.
Okay? That, and that puts the burden on us, and if we screw up, well, we've already capitulated because we screwed up. But I mean, we still have the ability to capitulate. Why put an extra burden on the staff?
Now, you were talking, now, that, that's when it comes to reminding them about the money.
Yeah, at the very, at the very end.
What is, what is, what about the thought of letting them know that we received the, their application?
I suppose.
You suppose leave it in or take it out?
Again, I think it's their responsibility to make sure that we get it.
I guess, I guess the only thing that I would say in this, Scott, if we're dealing with nonprofit organizations that are, in a lot of cases, very understaffed, and not all of them, but some of them are. I mean, someone like Wings or Kenneth Young shouldn't make these mistakes. But you do have some organizations that are very small and that don't have the infrastructure in place to follow up on this all the time. And it's certainly, I think we, I don't know if there's a need to play hardball, to be quite honest. I, I don't know if there's a need, if, if the goal here is to provide these funds to partners-
And again, I'm not-
-that are providing services that we can't provide but are important to our constituency, then I think we would want to try to make an effort to make it as easy for them, understanding that they may not administer things as perfectly as-
And, and again, I, I understand what you're saying. But again, if you've got money coming in and you're understaffed and you need that money, it's really your responsibility to make sure that you're getting that money.
No, I don't, I don't disagree with you.
And again, we can always capitulate. We can always say, "Okay, we'll do that."
And then the onus is on them to explain. I mean, Kenneth Young Center, having a staff turnover, come and make your case if, if you do miss those deadlines, but-
Yeah. And again, us notifying them that we received it, okay, I suppose we could, but why, why wouldn't they, why wouldn't they get a receipt?
I could, I could take or leave that one. I mean, um, just boggles my mind. Additional discussion?
Maybe we should leave that and take out the last two sentences.
Make it a motion, please.
Okay, I also have to change the second line in the last paragraph where it says "monthly, quarterly," and it says "of" after that. It should be-
Say that one more, your, what paragraph?
The last paragraph, the second sentence, at the end, it's-
Delete the second and third sentences?
Or the second line, it says "on a monthly, quarterly, of semi-annual."
Or, or semi-
It just has to be or. Yeah, that's all.